Of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. We have two public hearings tonight. First, then we'll get into the regular meeting. Don, you wanna? We're gonna get the zoning change first.
Okay. No, just I need the script from what we sent out to the public.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Public hearing will be held at 2:50 in Menance at 6:00 AM on April 15th. For purpose, the local law number two for the village of Menance, the vending zoning, zoning map, chapter 169 in Menance, those called rezoning, the tax map parcel, forty-four point fourteen dash one dash one and forty-four point fourteen dash two point one. There'll also be a public hearing for the increase to the sewer rates. All, all are invited to attend or send comments to Clark Canderhand. It's handicapped accessible.
To amend the zoning to include a parcel for the cemetery that they have initiated interest in building a new crematorium. And so this identified a parcel as somehow being outside the cemetery zoning, which is why we need to amend the zoning map. Matt, take it away.
Sure. So there's two parcels, one owned by Albany County Rural Cemetery, and then a second one that's owned by Niagara Mohawk that provided the zoning map to the village board. As the mayor's mentioned, we caught this when the cemetery reached out and said, hey, we want you to replace your crematorium. We took a look at the map. It's a parcel that's not somewhat contiguous, but it was rezoned or the rezoning went through. It was existing R1. Cemeteries aren't allowed in R1, but it's owned by the cemetery. It's always been owned by the cemetery, operated as such. So it was a straightforward change. And then the smaller parcel that's owned by National, or Niagara Mohawk, rather, was also zoned R1, and we felt we'll just bring it into their broader landholding and rezone it to Broadway businesses. Nothing's gonna happen on that one. It's currently an overhead power line. And Albany County reviews this this Wednesday, so this, no approval on this can happen until your first meeting in May. I talked to Don and we'll table it. Assuming there's no.
So, okay. Does the board have any questions?
Yeah, is this the lot where that old house sits? The kind of vacant house?
No, it's adjacent to that. That old house, I think, is approach this property. I don't know if there's, I can't recall if there's anything, because the existing crematorium is actually just over the border and by the town. So this one, I think, is fully vacant. And it's owned by the cemetery.
So there's nothing on this property at all currently?
Correct. And the reason, I guess, there's a gate there that, and they want this to be outside the gate so that if they have overnight deposits, I guess, they can, they don't have to enter the property. That's what they described.
Okay.
They said.
That's correct.
Members of the public? Bill, about the cemetery?
Yes. But that's local law number two, isn't it?
Yes.
All right. I do now for wealth, general welfare, you know, comfort and social wealth, social environment reasons, I do support this zoning changes obviously needs to be done. And we'll go ahead and get them changed by all means.
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
There you go.
Close it.
Six oh five. Second public hearing is regarding changing the distribution of sewer charges as a ratio of fifty percent instead of forty-five percent of water. The need to do this is twofold. One is to build up some additional reserves so that when we finally fund the South End infrastructure project, we have the adequate resources to help contribute to those expenses. And two, the Albany County wastewater treatment plant expects their $250 million in improvements to eventually start being borne by tax and ratepayers, which includes us, so to build up some additional reserves for that. In addition, we've over the last two years seen some additional added expenses for the maintenance of grinder pumps, which have increased to about twenty thousand dollars a year to almost $40,000 a year the last two years. This will help defray those costs. I think it's fair to say that each grinder pump at a minimum is about three, four thousand dollars in expenses. They used to be fifteen, eighteen hundred. And we need some additional sewer revenue to cover those expenses. So instead of forty-five percent, this would just basically increase the percentage to fifty percent of water. So I think that Bill calculated the average additional for each home was about twenty-eight dollars in total, fourteen? I think it's twelve per period.
Yeah.
So twenty-four dollars a year would be the average expense increase. So that's the reason, the reason for that request. Any other board questions?
When would this take effect?
Not, and so you cannot, it's not the period that we're in, but I believe the period starting till August. I think the next bill comes out.
Would it be May 1st? I think it says.
May 1st, which would be, so July's bill will be the biggest period we're in.
Yeah.
So let's start May 1st.
May 1st.
And the bill that you that would be due in January.
Did you see this as far as was the bill reserved up for the South End project?
So we're gonna need additional revenue to help contribute towards the expenses of the South.
You had the financing yet for the South End?
We're gonna talk about that later in the meeting.
Thank you.
Bill?
All right, now with the request for raising sewer rate percentage, you said it's fifty percent?
So we're at forty-five now. We're gonna go to fifty percent of water. So basically, it's an additional five percent of the amount of water.
Now, as I said, for well, general welfare, social, you know, economic and budgetary reasons, I'll support the idea of raising the sewer rate percentage to fifty percent. That includes the sewer water project at the South End of our building.
That's correct.
That's why the letter side wrote it in late recently. Thanks, Bill. Let me speak one more.
No problem. Thanks, Bill.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Six oh eight.
Okay, move in the motion to.
Through the minutes of March, or April 1st meeting.
I move to accept the minutes of the regular board meeting from April 1st, 2024.
One second.
Hold on a second. Any opposed?
Warrant number 22, general, ninety-one thousand, hundred and twelve dollars and twenty-six cents, water, three hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars and sixty-six cents, nothing in sewer. Total is three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-two cents. Payroll number 23, one hundred thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars and eighteen cents.
Still moved?
Second?
Hold on a second.
All right.
Any opposed?
Okay, we have a plethora of transfers. Twelve thousand dollars for the contingency account. We're gonna go to forty-five hundred of it will go to court officer. Forty-five hundred will go to the audit. Three thousand will go to economic development contractor.
It's current, yeah.
Computer from computer and software, sixty-five thousand, forty-five thousand contractual services.
Some of that was reimbursed by Arco money, so.
Computer and software, two twenty thousand. From the clerk miscellaneous, one thousand, seven hundred and fifty going to supplies, two hundred and fifty going to printing and books. From the police training, thirteen thousand, overtime, thirteen thousand. Telecommunicator part-time, forty-two hundred dollars to part-time.
Hold on. So basically, when we send an officer to training, it's not the cost of the training, it's to backfill for the person who's at training. So that's why we pay that at overtime. So that's why we're just taking the money from training and putting it in overtime.
Okay, that makes sense.
Before we move on, can we go back up to economic development, three thousand dollars?
Uh, that's from Max. Who's, what is that for?
Which one?
Economic Development. It's a short budget amount.
I don't know. He just says here to budget short, shortfall in the budget. I don't know what that one is, what it's for. If I could find it.
Can? Yeah. So can we table that one transfer until we have more information?
No. No, I'm right. I love it. Because it's, because you're taking a certain amount out of one.
I get it. Why can't we just say that line was?
From the continuing.
Right, so why don't we make that just nine thousand? Right? Nine thousand as a contingent. And then eliminate for now that three thousand, and only two forty-five hundreds stick.
That's fine, that's fine. No problem. I mean, I just wanna make sure we're not, if it's something that's pressing with it.
Nothing pressing.
Yeah, what's the three? It's three weeks.
That's fine. We can figure it out. Is that fair, everyone?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. Sorry, Don.
Tell him more notes.
What's that?
Tell him more notes.
Yeah, more contracts, please.
Uh, telephone, uh, or good help. Police are two thousand, uniform allows two thousand. Fire miscellaneous, thirteen thousand to equipment miscellaneous, thirteen thousand.
I think that was the money that, the equipment that we bought.
From fire department training, fourteen hundred to seven hundred dollars for equipment repair and gas and oil, seven hundred dollars. For recruitment and attention, one thousand, the miscellaneous, or to physicals, one thousand. In street, twelve hundred and fifty dollars for insurance, the street supplies, a thousand, and signs, two hundred and fifty. Twenty-five dollars from youth instructors to twenty-five dollars to personnel service that was for the HISA party. In the water fund, purchase of water, twenty-five hundred dollars, the maintenance of the coronators, twenty-five hundred dollars. For the sewer contingency account, seventy-five hundred dollars, the sanitary sewers, outside contractors, seventy-five hundred dollars. That was for the repair on North Pearl when we had to have to back structure. And only your grand tour with the exception of that one.
Make a motion as amended?
Second? Hold on a second. All right. Any opposed? We have, I don't know, this year's budget, we purchased new dumpsters. And Mike wants to buy a new lawnmower, and we have money in that account in equipment savings, so he just needs authorization to journal that money so that, so that we can make those purchases. The dumpsters were delivered today. They're back at the office. They're shiny and new.
Not for long.
Not for long, exactly. So we need to transfer. Someone wanna read that?
Sure. I move the following resolution, authorizing the treasurer to transfer eighty-seven hundred dollars from the equipment savings account to general cash account, A dot zero 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 zero, that zero two zero zero. And to amend the 2023, 2024 village budget per account, A five dot five one one zero dot zero two zero eight, street equipment miscellaneous.
One second.
Hold on a second. All right.
One more resolution for the treasurer.
The Controller's Office one?
Yeah, because we put the money, Bill put the money in one account, but the controllers wanted it in a different account, and then.
Is this, this is for what? Which, this is for which item? Is this for the dispatch or the dispatch money?
No, this is if there's a change in the resolution, the resolution we already approved, I don't have the.
What is that resolution?
I don't know. I don't have, it just says, he says resolution number.
Yeah, that's, this is, this is, this is the change, the dispatch, twenty-five thousand dollars that we just.
Okay.
Oh, that's to pay.
Yeah, that's, I don't feel comfortable approving it without us knowing.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I'll have to table that. I don't, I don't remember what to for, but I believe it's because we put it in radio or something like that.
Yeah, that's exactly what it was.
Yeah, so the dispatch money, we put in radio and communications, and it has to go into something, it has to go to contracted services, I believe.
Yeah.
So that's what the resolution is. But still, isn't this holding up?
Hold up, send it to the check to them.
We're not sending the check to them until the beginning of this. All right, let's table that and we'll come back. But that's, I believe that's what it was, because I know we talked about that. I don't know why he didn't give more detail.
You should have spelled it out a little more.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. Matt, what, we're gonna table the approval of the zoning law so we get the approval from the county.
When's the first meeting in May? May 6th?
Yeah.
Okay. Well.
The regulation to raise the.
Sewer rates. Okay. Yes, so, yeah, that's, you're off. Matt, go ahead. You skipped over, Matt.
I just told you transfer. All right, Mr. Hurstburg's here to go over the proposed two lots subdivision for one Broadway. That's just a technically a major subdivision by definition, but only two lots. Do you wanna give a quick little group, someone help you do that?
This proposal is to establish a new parcel. About a year ago, we got a variance for these garages alongside the property line. The question was, do we have space behind them to mow them, mow the lawn, and we went through that and had variances granted. Meanwhile, this entire project is under a HUD financing agreement. And they would like to remove the parcel that holds those garages from the HUD finance agreement and so that they're, they can separately finance the construction of those garages. It's about a quarter of an acre property and to handle the access to it, it currently is an easement to come back down and serve this parcel here. We're gonna have to extend it to the end there and put in a little addition to that easement so that full access is granted to these garages. Now that we're setting up a separate parcel, we're gonna need a variance for the other situation. The sideline over here on the city side is about a foot, and the front setback is also very small to keep it under the line of that easement. So we'll need a couple of area variances if this subdivision gets.
Is Albany County planning up the wind as well because of the proximity?
Yes.
Yes. Is that in the, so this is to the back of the property or you meant to where Broadway is?
Yeah, Broadway's up here.
Okay, so this is the back end of the property.
It's a fence line to the railroad tracks.
Okay, all right.
Here's the ponds here.
Yep, okay.
It's all the way at the back. The neighbor is a railroad and their fences on the property line is actually over the property a little bit, but we won't contest that. But that entire line is spats by the railroad. So our goal here is to be able to create that separate parcel so that we could take it out of the HUD financing agreement. I answer any questions just right now?
And that's, that's why the zoning board didn't really have any issue with providing the one foot.
Yeah.
Setback.
Yeah.
Is it's, there's nothing there. There can't ever be anything there.
Yeah, there's nothing that concerns me. I don't.
Our only name is the railroad.
So from here.
You stole, you stole property?
Yeah.
Once, once the new parcel's created, you then have to go back to the zoning board and ask for the same relief for the new parcel?
Yeah.
Correct.
All right. Okay. Any questions, anyone?
In terms of schedule, because we have to wait on the county, the approval can be granted at the May 20 meeting, because we have to wait on the county. And we can probably, this is kind of a sidebar, but we might be able to reach out to Albany County in the near future and see if we can get some waivers for a lot of these referrals. So some communities will get waivers, like minor subdivisions, stuff like that, because this, you know, we lose a whole month plus. For really no valid reason, you know.
I tried for years to get them to approve waivers. They had very small projects that they had nothing to offer on it. They didn't even know they were really reviewing it. So they did it on a defer local action, and the whole list though. Out of the defer local action are probably twelve or fifteen every month. Out of those, at least six or seven of them could have been not gone to them at all or some minors. In addition, because it's on a public highway, it's gotta be reviewed.
Can we address that down the road?
Yes, I've worked with communities where they, just through resolution, gotten, not, not with Albany County, with other counties. So, I mean, they just may have a no-keeper policy, but it's something you'd get in, so it's like you don't even have to ask them for really minor projects. So if we can broach that subject with them and.
Is that our future?
Is that a conversation that one should have with them, or is that?
Yeah, we can kind of reach out to the county planner and say, hey, this is what we're thinking. Who do we need to speak with, set up a meeting? Assuming that they don't write it down and go, no, we don't, we don't do that, so.
But that's the worst that can happen.
Right, so at least we can ask.
Exactly.
You're gonna save so much time.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Glad that you go.
We're gonna, once the vote, is it second meeting or first?
For May, May 20, that's second.
So we can't vote on this until we have a response from Albany County?
Yeah, I mean, at the first May meeting, you can approve it with the condition, and then at least you can file them the variance. Yeah.
If you do, you have to be preferable.
Okay, so we'll plan on that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Dan. So that, that brings me then to another question. Couldn't we then do that with the cemetery issue too? Depending the, with the condition?
You can, but it's a little different. It's a map amendment, and we can't file the new map with the state until we get that. But that's just, and the way the law is written for referrals, it just says you can't make a decision when the local county gets back to you. It's something as minor as this, and nothing's gonna happen.
Yeah.
You know, so it's just, it allows then and the applicant to move forward with the variance process.
Yeah.
So, but I would, for the county, it's not gonna, we haven't heard back from the, from the cemetery anyway, so it's not like jumping at the bit to get moving on it, so I'd rather just.
Their occupants aren't going anywhere. All right, thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Where are we done? Sewer rate?
I need someone to make a motion to change the sewer distribution from forty-five percent to fifty percent.
I, I offer the resolution authorizing an increase in the sewer rate by five percent to make it fifty percent of water sewer amount. This'll take effect May 1st, 2024.
Second?
Hold on a second. All right. Any opposed? Matt, do you wanna talk about our ADA compliance grant?
Sure. So through Pepperdome Transportation Council, they are accepting grant applications for communities to perform self-evaluation of ADA accessibility. So it was back in 2018 or so, CRTC mapped all the sidewalks within the village, and we have that data, and it's actually being uploaded to your, your GIS mapping system, which will have an update on that at the next meeting. But that'll go live tomorrow hopefully. So the grant application essentially provides funding with some, so municipality can provide a match, and we talked around thirty-five hundred to five thousand along with in-kind services. So it'd be one DPW stat member that will assist in doing the inventory. So what it involves essentially is going through all of the village sidewalks and intersections and identifying where there's gaps in sidewalks, where there's trip hazard or some other issue that's non-ADA compliant, along with the intersections with drop ramps, to see if those are ADA compliant, and any other aspect that would not comply with the ADA, and also just in general safe pedestrian access. These are just sidewalks. So if it's, you can through that, that, that process. And typically, CRTC will partner with firms to assist. So we've done a lot of them, City of Troy, Town of Gilderlin, Austin Spa, and we have the equipment. So you have an opportunity to add additional stuff. So if you have, you know, a public building in that area, you can, while you're out there, you can make the note, maybe add it to the database.
Driveway aprons and such, is that again?
If you wanna collect that data, you know, that, that's an opportunity to do it. So, and so there'll be.
I can tell you where there's a sidewalk?
Yes, you can. So there'll be, like, so there will be a kickoff meeting, so if the village is supportive of the funding, there'll be a kickoff meeting, and you can identify, like, these are everything that's a lot to, to evaluate from once we're out there. So that's through a handheld device that collects all that information. So the applications due, they extended it, so it's due Friday. Have ninety percent of the applications filled out, ready to go. We're confirming the.
So we needed to talk about a group. We talked with DPW about who would be a good person to do this, this, this tracking work, and Mark was a volunteer and a victim.
Sorry.
So, so basically, we put together a small group of committee, myself, Mark, Dave, who is our GIS coordinator, and Diane Manner as representative of the seniors, to talk all about, you know, these, these type of variants. I thought that was a national group that the board agreed on.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, so we're gonna put the final touches on the grant application and then submit it to the board.
There'll be some.
Yeah.
So we would then approve, we don't have to approve the grant application.
We do?
Yeah.
The authorization to submit for a grant with in-kind services and a cash.
Cash, Matt. So it only requires a letter of commitment. We draft that letter.
Yep.
There's no resolution requirement. There's no resolution requirement like other grants. So, but in the application, we have identified, I put as a placeholder 3,500.
Okay.
And then I think 40 hours of Mark's time. Cause we can bump that up a little for moving around. Um, but it's good to show both that you're, you're committed. And like, as I mentioned before, we're not, we're not charging for the application because it's not a huge endeavor, like an hour or two of our time. So that, that's not gonna be charged back to you.
Thank you.
But just that letter of commitment, which we have, ready to go, we got that last week.
Okay, so what, what type of resolution do you need from us?
It's already.
Yeah, okay. All those are paper.
Alright.
Any opposed?
That's ours.
Yeah.
Good, it's easy. Making sure you guys. Yeah, I'm sorry. No, it's not exactly the DRI.
So you're forward.
Yeah. And Mark, I'm glad you didn't get voluntold.
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thanks, Matt. Don't, don't leave it. One more thing to talk about.
Okay. Well, at least one more.
Okay.
One always. Well, I'm sorry, who motioned a second ago?
Shannon, yeah.
So I wanted to go over with, while we were going through the budget process, there was questions about comparing the village, police force, um, I just.
I got my.
Hold on, I know it's here. So we put together basically, uh, the police department put together some comparisons. There's been some comments recently about Manan's and crime. And well, Albany and Troy have surely seen their share of, of increased crime. The, uh, the village has not seen that. In fact, our crime here in the village has actually dropped considerably. And I just wanted to highlight those facts, you know? Violent crimes were down 40%, motor vehicle deaths were down 30%, larceny were down 20%. Um, and there was a sure, uh, uh, increase, uh, correlation between traffic stops, which were up 50% last year. And a decrease in motor vehicle crashes. So far in 2024, calls for service are up 49%, which if the trend continues, will more than double the number of calls that they had in 2021. And this continues to allow the officers the shortest response time among many of the recent, or, uh, local agencies. One of the things that we talked about when I met with them, the city of Albany and the city of Troy both have crime rates that are equal to that of Philadelphia. Which is surely a hotspot of crime when you're looking at violent crime per capita. So when we compare where Manan stands as far as the number of officers on the back. You know, we're, we're right in line with what all of the jurisdictional entities, the FBI, BOJ, all recommend for a population of, of ours worth of square miles and, and population. So we fit, we fit right in there. And I, you know, I just want to say that I think the reason that our crime has decreased while our neighbors' crime, our budding neighbors, has increased is because we spend money on police. So this is, I think, evidence of that. And I'm gonna put this on the website for anyone to. When I look at other, other villages in here, yeah, we are not only in line, but we, we have a pretty trimmed department comparatively.
Well, if you look at the city of Rensselaer, which is approximately the same size that Poissons and the New York.
Right. Yeah, I mean, they certainly have a denser population, but, uh, you know.
But isn't it more, but you know, it's the full area and so on, I mean.
For 3.5 square miles, that's an awful lot of officers.
Right.
You know, I mean, and, and above, you know, so anyway, I just, I just wanted to put a fair analysis out there. So, so we spent some time and then looked at the numbers.
Well, and we look at Catskill.
That's right. And, and, and look, our, you know, our comparison is, is like Scotia and, and Rensselaer. Um, and, you know, Gunns Falls. If you compare us to some of the jurisdictions that are way out west, that are literally in the middle of nowhere.
Right.
That's, it's not a fair comparison, sorry.
The only, the only other thing we can look at to break it down is like full-time versus part-time officers on some of these maybe.
So this, this is only full-time officers.
Just, this is just full-time.
Like for instance, Green Island. Green Island has, I think, 10 full-time officers. Do you count those as officers?
Part-time officers.
Part-time officers, yeah. Sorry. They don't have any full-time officers. So to say that they have 10 officers is really incorrect. These, we have 14 parole officers. So this is, this is, uh, we have three part-time officers, but they only fill in when we need one of those 14 officers replaced. Alright.
Thank you.
Alright, what's next?
The fire department.
Fire department. Yeah, I wanna do that.
We, we have to advise the board of the.
Okay. Alright, so, uh, the elections from the fire company on April 2nd were Dave Ogden as chief, Mike Stewart as deputy chief, Jonathan Dudley as assistant chief, TJ Robertson as captain, Chair Shonville as lieutenant, Tony LaFara as lieutenant.
Make a motion to approve the 2024, 2025 fire line officer.
Second. All those are papers. Alright.
Just to let everybody know that the fire department can be using the apparatus for the Little League parade on April 27th, which was approved during the annual meeting. Also, just I want to advise you that we are gonna, going to be receiving a check for four, a little over $4,000 from Cops Alliance. Because our, we have a perfect workers' comp rating.
Thanks.
That's great news.
Amen.
How would you?
Helpful.
Uh, okay, Southland Water and Sewer Project. Uh, I did not win the billion dollar lottery, so next month I was not able to make up the $5 million difference that we have there. From when we started six years ago, to now the cost for that project is 17 million versus 12 and change. And so we're basically trying to figure out where to make up the difference. I had a meeting with EFC where I pretty much literally begged for a solution. We wrote to Senator Ashby, Assemblyman Steck.
Gillibrand.
Gillibrand, Anco, Schumer. Uh, and asked for various pots of money that they have to help fill the gap. We're hoping that we have a meeting with Ted from Labella and EFC again to figure out where we're gonna make up the difference. Basically, this construction period will be washed. Because even if we had the money and we put it out to bid this year, it would be an overbid. So that, uh, because they would be trying to squeeze it into the end of the schedule, so we would overpay. So that basically allows us to reset and submit the bids, but hopefully put it out to bid this winter for a spring start. And be first on the list for the project to get started in the beginning of the spring. Kind of where we're at. We also asked EFC to divide the project into two sections. First being the lines all of Woolford and Amsterdam, North Pearl and the Cross Street at Hutton. Uh, that's the larger section and more expensive section of the project. And then creating a phase two, which would be Hendrick and then all the side streets. Uh, we're waiting for, uh, EFC to, to tell us if a very logical proposal seems logical to them. And basically we've, uh, been pestering them weekly, I think, pretty much to, uh, to try and get an answer from them. So that's where we basically are. Unless somebody does hit the lottery, we're kind of in the middle of a, a standstill. So that's the good news on that project, unfortunately. So borrowing is simply out of the question. Borrowing that entire amount of additional money would basically make water rates and sewer rates unaffordable. And it's just without, without grant money contributing to a good portion of that $5 million difference. Uh, the project just is, is, is unable to proceed. So that's kind of where we are. So that's that. Gander Smith Park, weather has been very uncooperative. Yeah. Uh, and I guess work was done on Saturday to help, uh, move that along. I met with Karen from the Little League this morning while our team was there doing some work. Um, and tomorrow, from what I understand, the delivery of the red flirt for the baseball lines is being delivered. So they should be able to move some of that forward tomorrow. Uh, additionally, the improvements on the back, lower bathrooms are progressing slightly behind, also because of the weather. Like hopefully they're gonna be open for opening day. If not, we have a contingency plan of bathrooms up, uh, that are already open at the top of the, the park. Tony, what explain the 50/50s?
50/56 Clippers, um, they're gonna, the driveway that they, they have is gonna have a nameless Davis pine. It's gonna be a private road. And the reason for that is for 911 purposes. It puts if you had the, um, 50/56, it's behind, maybe a street, basically, so that's why they're gonna be naming it.
So there's a, is it a public road or a private?
Private road.
So.
Private road.
My question then is, normally the development, there's development and, you know, they have, they have to pay, you know, some kind of bond until they complete the road to town standards. And then, well, this is my question, so. And do that and you still have to go build it. And is he gonna maintain it? So that brings immediate questions to my mind, because I, I just remember with the whole thing with Jones Court. And even though, you know, we, it was gonna be a deed back to the village. Uh, so we basically was required to build it to town standards for, for just those reasons, for our services purposes, et cetera. And, you know, obviously he didn't want us to see the maintenance, you know, down the road. What happens now that this is gonna be private? It's more or less gonna be a. It's gonna be like 400, even.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that concerned me a little bit.
I mean, during the review, it was always, it was reviewed as being a private.
Right.
Now, yeah, I, so, but, but that doesn't mean that it, it doesn't, it can't, or it shouldn't be posted suspects to, to carry the load of.
Right. Uh, and I, we did talk about the, when the village vehicles being able to get in and out of it, you know, turnarounds.
Yep, so that.
Wouldn't that be part of site plan review?
That would, yeah, so we, we reviewed and, and approved and, and the fire department signed off on the fact that they, the turning movement wasn't gonna be met 100% to the building code. But the department felt that they could still make a turn. So as long as they still build it according to the site plan approval.
Yeah, but that, that's just the layout, not like how much, you know, they. How thick, exactly.
Right, and again, that was a part of the environment review that we looked at. I mean, off the top of my head, I, I have to go back and look, but the fact that it's, it's becoming of a private road doesn't impact.
That we can inquire that still.
Well, if it was becoming a public road, then that's a different story.
Well, I know, but at the same time, it's still gonna require at some point, you know, just by necessity, it, it still is gonna have to meet the requirements to carry the weight of the heavy vehicles.
And that, make it a consideration anyway as part of the engineering review that was completed.
Okay.
So the fact that it's, you know, gonna become a, you know, designated private road, doesn't bring back any additional requirements. But I can, I can double check with Lauren on the whole weight issue just for.
Cause I feel like during the whole site plan, they kept referring to it as a driveway, not as a.
Yeah.
Well, that's where it's like.
Like now needs a stop sign and all that, like, cause you're gonna be entering onto Clifford Road, so, correct?
Well, that begins, it's the first time here in the, in the change on the driveway to private road. So, um, and I.
This was all 911s. Well, and, and, and so they're looking at that perspective, which is fine, because I remember we went through that whole thing, we renamed all the private roads. Right. And readdressed them. Uh. But the county still doesn't recognize. People can't do county website for the.
Does this have to be done? Can we, can we?
I mean, we can, it's already done.
We can do, the road part is gonna have to.
Yeah, so we, we can follow up to, to, to make sure if, that if there are legal requirements now, because it's, it's gonna be recognized as a private road, not a driveway. With respect to stop signs or like that.
Striping all that.
We, we could take a look at that to see what those requirements are. But it doesn't likely change how the road is constructed. So it's, so, but again, the engineering review would have looked at the, the weight bearing capacity of the road and make sure it's wide enough, all the turning movements and, and all that was, was handled. So if there are other legal and it's stuff that I can, I can.
But it's, they already gave a little bit on that point already, so I don't wanna see.
On the turning movements? Right.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. But again, I, we'll have to look to see if there's any legal changes. Because now it's a private road as opposed to a driveway. There may not be any, any differences. It's just 911 purposes or addresses. May not re, require stop signs or striping or any of that. Cause you, I mean, you see a lot of private roads all the time.
Right.
And obviously that caused some problems down the road, depending on who's maintaining it. But it, it still remains their responsibility to maintain that access to private road, private line haul. So that follow-up on that.
Can we circle back on, on all of that and table this to the next meeting?
Table what?
Well, yeah, there's nothing. It's just your report.
Are we, I mean, are, have we approved?
911 did it. We, we have nothing to do with it.
Alright.
I'm just advising that that's what they.
Yeah. I don't think we need, we had to vote on that.
Unless, I, I think, unless Matt finds that there's something that we have to do to, you know, where it connects or whatnot, as of right now, there's nothing we have to do.
Well, no, but I'm just saying, in the, in the prior circumstance of Jones. I mean, developer created the road.
Yeah.
Driveway, et cetera, and then feeding it back to the village, but because we.
Okay, well then now that it's called Davis Pine Road or what, private road.
Yeah. But I just, what, so all I'm saying is that we just wanna ensure that they still are building it to a standard that's gonna be, you know.
I'm all set for that. So we'll just clarify, if calling it a private road increases the required standards, I don't, I don't have time ahead.
Or doesn't decrease the.
It's not gonna increase, that's for sure. Still has to, at the very minimum, has to file the site plan approval.
Alright.
Um, okay, I had a meeting with our relationship manager for KeyBank. I was disheartened by some of the fees and charges that we were, that we are facing with KeyBank. And when I received explanations for some of them, for instance, why we were being charged for depositing cash. Uh, the answers were not helpful. So, um, the village has, was transferred to KeyBank after Perth Niagara was bought by KeyBank. There's a reason why others in the municipal world call KeyBank FeeBank. And basically, uh, the village has the established relationship with Green County, Bank of Green County. And, and reviewing our statements and accounts with them. Instead of us being charged 10, $20,000 a year in fees, we could be earning $87,000 in interest. Uh, and that's only if we keep the money. Uh, and that's only if we keep the money at Bank of Green County, who already approved the possibility of putting some money in New York class and earning even more money. So, um, I would like to encourage the board to approve us switching our accounts from KeyBank to the Bank of Green County. The two nearest branches of the Bank of Green County are ones in East Green Bush, which is 10 minutes away. And the other is on Wolf Road, which is depending on traffic, 10 to 15 minutes away, but is a little closer. Uh, they don't charge any fees.
Currently, we haven't gotten it matters. Currently, do we go to the one in, um, Kimberly Square?
We do. Okay. Um, so the drive is a little bit further, but with the electronic banking that we do and the check collector, which is free at the Bank of Green County. Uh, a large portion of the money that we collect is deposited electronically. Um, in addition, banks now offer something that helps prevent fraud. It's called Positive Pay. Mike and I were talking about it earlier. It helps, uh, institutions combat fraud. So basically today's vouchers, which you all signed. Those checks get loaded up into the system and then the bank knows exactly which checks should be coming for payment and what the exact amount is. If they get something outside of those downloads, they hold it or they reject it so that nobody can write a check and then steal money from us. They would hold it and not pay it until we verify that it's a valid check. It helps the bank combat fraud, but KeyBank, if we want to
KeyBank doesn't have Positive Pay?
They do, but they charge for it, even though it helps protect them against fraud, just like it helps protect us against fraud.
Is that in addition to the fees that we're currently paying?
Oh, my gosh.
So then my question is, what would ultimately involve, be involved with, uh, us extracting ourselves from one to the other?
So, uh, we would simply amend our relationship. So in each year, we, 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 in the organizational meeting state that KeyBank is our authorized repository. Okay. We would simply have to do that all over again mid-year, uh, which, which is
Are you just looking to do, are, are you looking to do this in the next couple of weeks or are you looking?
I'm looking to establish the account of the Green County ace.
By, by the beginning of the next fiscal year?
And have, yeah, basically I want to use those accounts starting the next, the beginning of the next fiscal year.
Okay.
But establishing the authorization to
Would it be, would it, so if we notified, uh, a fee of our intent to do so, would they have to take the action and we'd said transfer all our accounts, et cetera, et cetera? How would that necessarily work?
So first of all, um, I would make sure you get a chart, chart of a fee listing
Absolutely.
from them, from, you know, Bank of Green County to get all that, um, to convert all this as quickly as you can, is, is impossible.
Okay, that's, yeah, yeah, it's a, it's a big, it's a big deal.
There's just too much tied into what you do. I, I would do it in steps.
Yes. So the first, the first step would be to establish all of the savings accounts first, since those have the least amount of activity to start with those accounts. The general fund is, is obviously the largest account. Some of the agency accounts, like the one that funds the payroll is only a few transactions, uh, at a time. So, so according to the representatives of Green County Bank, uh, we would start by establishing the new accounts, transition the smaller accounts over, close the residuals of those accounts, and then eventually move, uh, based on, uh, the start of the new fiscal year to the new
Just as long as you use all those accounts you transfer, you reconcile those accounts here to KeyBank's records and then do the transfer. Cause if you do it after, they're not gonna help. I mean, they're not gonna help you anyway. Let's say, they're not gonna be helping at all.
Right.
They'll charge your fee.
Helpful fee.
They're gonna charge a fee for not helping?
They won't charge. I mean, I, I think you just have to take it step by step and reconcile because once you have reconciled your records to theirs and you're fine with that, anything else that comes up, they're not gonna be as cooperative in solving the issue that they might have been before. But I think you do it all at once is a lot.
I, I am
So I sent everyone the email.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I mean, I, I'm more than supportive of, of uh, what you're proposing. I'm just nervous about how it's
Agreed.
more gonna operate. That's
I really need to be a plan that Green County involved with that plan so they know exactly cause your operating account, you're gonna have items that can you clear out of KeyBank? They don't want to close that account up. You
Right.
got all those checks.
Absolutely.
Uh, so maybe, uh, so the, the first step then would be to, uh,
Establish.
Yeah, to establish and get the list of fees and whatnot and basically enter into communication with Bank of Green County. Like, these are the accounts that we are gonna need to create and for these purposes, uh, to basically figure out, as you said, with the fees and then, uh, go from there. So basically enter into communication to, um, to, to set those up and to get the fee schedules for them. And I, I see no downside to that.
You take your last statement from Key and give that to
Did.
Green County and have them put it
Some of the services and products we can provide to you for free include locking backs for nitro, RDC check scanning, ACH deposit and vendor payments, Positive Pay, online banking, free wires, free credit cards, full collateralization on all accounts. We pay for your checks, deposits, such endorsement stamps for the life of the relationship, free from fees, wires, overdrafts, statement fees, low balance fees, et cetera.
And I would just, I would line that up with what you have at KeyBank and make sure you've covered everything.
Yep.
Take your time.
And see if there's anything they're not saying that we need to say. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So I'll, I'll gather that. We'll table this for discussion to confirm all that for next meeting.
But it, just in case, uh, there's a question, uh, you know, I, I'd move to give the mayor, uh, permission to, uh, enter into conversation with the Bank of Green County, uh, with regards to all of our accounts, uh, their purposes and fee schedules.
All those are paid.
All right.
All right.
Okay. Is that your phone? I'm ready. All right. Uh, hold on.
Is it events?
Yeah, hold on. I got a couple things. Um, I gave, I sent everyone a list of some of the events coming up this year. Um, and some of the events that we've had. Easter party, Earth Day cleanup. Tim, you want to hit that one?
Oh, yeah. So, uh, uh, we issued out the, uh, um, notices and the menage activities. And I also personally delivered to about three dozen businesses along Broadway, the flyer to ask for the cooperation of the businesses. And to ask them to pitch in whatever they could within their particular lots and areas. Um, you know, and they don't have to wait till Sunday. They can do it, you know, anytime now, you know, before or after. Um, but basically, uh, I think we get a good turnout. I've already, you know, uh, coordinated with Mike Hagman. He's gonna provide some tools and some bags and
he has them right in the hallway. There's a bag, a case of bags and
Pickup sticks.
Pickup sticks right in the hallway.
In the, in the hallway here or?
In the hallway.
And Tim, just so you know, flyer also went home at every kid's, um, backpack last week.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes. Very good. So hopefully we get a good turnout. And I drove around the village to, uh, basically compile a list of areas to focus on that I could see. But obviously there might be places that I missed. I sent it out to, uh, to Meg and Laura and, uh, you know, to see if they had any other thoughts on places that we could hit. Um, but, uh, if people can't personally make it, you know, they, you know, they can just leave the areas around their neighborhoods, their homes, et cetera. So, I mean, we're kind of trying this into the centennial and just trying to, you know, make a place sites in preparation as we go forward.
Cool. Thank you for organizing that.
Well, not just me.
Well, it, uh, uh, working to, to make it happen two years in a row.
I also want to mention, so, uh, we had been in contact with Steve's office who submitted our information regarding, uh, the review we want done on a title, uh, for the areas around the Little River. And, uh, as you saw, he said, uh, his office sent back a quotation, well, here is also back a quotation. Uh, that seemed a little higher than we expected. So Matt had some thoughts on maybe how we could
How we streamline that?
Well, the, the, in the email, we structured it in terms of priority. So looking at the Elmwood Road deed is, is important because that, that's the main access in the area. Um, and then just a sliver of the regional farmers market, um, one, although that one, we can just call them up, you know, like basically say, well, I haven't a good chance, I didn't look at that deed. Um, but
Does Sneeranger have that deed?
They have all, all
Yeah, they said all the ones that we call them, all the county.
Right. So the Elmwood one is, is key. Uh, I, I don't think it would, regional farmers would have a problem. They may not even realize that their lot, you know, wraps a corner of, of dirt road, gravel road, everybody's going over. So the village has been accessing the, you know, peons, right? So when it goes over a bunch of properties packed in there, ultimately it might be good for the village to, to, to look at the Hudson Estates deed. Uh, but in terms of the, the project, we're not looking at accessing down that, that far. We're gonna try to keep it closer to, to Broadway. So, um, the Elmwood Road is important to find out, you know, what access rates the village has over that. Um, and then, um, the railroad parcel.
Yeah. The old railroads are that narrow, long strip, which there's no spurther available under, but
Right. So those are the two primary ones where if we end up locating an, an, a put in point, right, basically right at the end of Elmwood or just slightly to the, to the south. Then we need access over Elmwood and, and the railroad part.
So the goal with having the title company search those parcels is what?
Just to find out who actually owns them and, and what the status of them is and who do we reach out to discuss any kind of, you know?
Yeah. The primary one is just to find out if, if there's existing easements, access easements over those, the railroad is more of who owns that? Now, I mean,
As far as I can tell, it's, it's CP Rail, but
Right.
the, the taxes aren't paid on it. So God knows if they even know they have this property.
Yeah. And there's also, if it gets way beyond me, you know, this, this, does the railroad require, are they required to pay taxes? I know there's different rules for that. So it's just really a matter of who's, do they even, are they even aware of it? Is there some longstanding access easement over the, over that parcel? Um, because without, and it's not to say that we couldn't negotiate agreement with the mark, regional market along with Elmwood to, um, cloverleaf, that's who owns that, um, to get access. But it's from a basic planning perspective, we have to have an idea of what your current
Right. So the, but the, the main for us being that if, if you can maybe inform Sneeranger, you know, kind of a narrower scope.
Yeah, we can say, hold off on, on the Hudson Estates one, but that's down the line, although the village may want to try to confirm, you know, your current access rights if you're using that right now.
Well, so can we limit the scope of their work for those two parcels?
If, yeah, I, I can follow up with Steve. I know he's in line, but
Yeah. And then, and that's, you know, if you want to put a cap of saving, well, or K.
I mean, how many, there were a lot of deeds.
There were several, yeah.
Yeah, but we can, we limit it to those two parcels?
Yeah. Yeah, we can, we can limit it to
See where that brings us as far as
Yeah.
Elmwood and the railroad.
The cost, the cost is to do the work to figure out who owns it, what the chain of ownership was and what easements exist.
It's really that. Easements and the ownership for the railroad.
Okay.
Yeah. We know Elmwood owns them, but the, the gravel road, we know regional market owns that. And, and, but the, the biggest question is, is, is the railroad, what type of easements at all? Are we just crossing it? Have we been funding it?
Certainly have.
Be legally?
So can we, can we limit it to that scope of work or do we have to
Yeah, I can, I can follow up with, with the title company and say, hey, they did start to look into it momentarily, they said, and they'll set us on pay four or six weeks.
Four or six weeks, so I'm like
That's, I don't know. I have
Depends on the amount of title work. I mean, uh, I, I wouldn't think they're that busy, but I guess to protect
You're gonna implore them to do within the four.
Well, Steve knows, Steve knows Sneeranger.
Oh, that's right. Steve would be better than us.
Yeah.
And Steve, I'll, I'll catch up with you tomorrow, Steve. It'd just be easier to talk about this on the phone when you can hear me.
So how about you, how about you guys can, uh, clarify that piece and then we'll blow down this meeting.
That's, that's fine. No, we're, we're, I wasn't looking for a vote tonight. I think
Yeah, because I figured if it was gonna be a couple thousand, we'd just take it out of the grant, right, out of the existing project budget. But once I saw that $5,000, that's, that's a quarter of the project budget, then, you know.
Agreed.
We'd have some
I also have a contact, the vice president of CP Rail. I have her number. I'll forward that to you.
Okay. Thank you.
How'd you get that?
Uh, after
Over.
Uh, okay, a couple more things. Uh, next meeting, I would like to talk about aligning our healthcare buyout a little better between the handbook and the PBAs healthcare buyout. Currently, the, the amounts are, I always mix them up. Is it a thousand for a single?
Yes.
2,500 for a family and 5,000 for a
That's what the PBA is, like the charges.
So the handbook is, is, is less?
Yeah.
Uh, so I would like to propose that the two equal each other. A family plan costs the village $36,000 a year roughly. So a $5,000 buyout is not necessarily inappropriate. It's what the, it's what the PBA gets. So, uh, I'd like to bring that, that to meeting for discussion. I'll get some numbers and such. Uh, we talked a little bit about Albany wastewater treatment plant. There's been a, a bunch of different, uh, news stories
Yes.
about, about that going on and the smell and all that stuff. Sometimes it's, it's, uh, it seems it's not, it's not our side. It's actually Rensler County side. Just to give you an example of some of the things we're dealing with, during the last rainstorm that ended this morning, the Rensler County wastewater treatment plant dumped 4.2 million dollars of untreated sewage into the Hudson River just from last night's rain event, over 17 hours. Uh, the Menance, the Menance wastewater treatment plant dumped uh, 4 million gallons of semi-treated sewage into, into the Hudson River. So it's no wonder it smelled, um, but I think they're working on it. It's just gonna take some time. Um, I wanted to say that the schools budget, uh, hearing or I guess presentation is on May 8th. And the vote is May 21st. For anyone who has the time to
Yes, May 21st is the evening of the arts.
So I want to announce that. The work on the high reservoir is complete and it seems to have made a difference. Uh, Dave Ogden, Director of Water, has said that the, the amount of water that we've been losing has dropped from roughly a million gallons. When we first shut the tank down, that tank down that we repaired, it dropped from roughly a million gallons a day, just under a million gallons a day to about 800 and change a day, and it's held there. So it's definitely made a difference. Uh, we're working with Cloverleaf, uh, landscape people to do some of the drainage work. And we think that that's gonna actually be less expensive than initially, uh, initially thought. We're gonna try and do that drainage work so that the water coming off the backside that's affecting Doug
Yeah.
uh, is, is contained
Okay.
uh, better, as best as
But bottom line, it looks like we're losing 200,000 gallons.
I wouldn't say close, I wouldn't say 200, but I'd say 100.
It's a lot of water. Yeah, which is the equivalent of, you know, of, of a, a good size line flowing
10% daily use?
Right. Right. Yeah. That's, that is a lot. And that's every day. It's, I mean, we're not talking the one time event. That's every day. It's, I mean, we're not talking the one time event. That's every day.
That's right.
Um, is there any work that has to be done on the back two compartments now or are they done there?
Uh, I know. It's it's a whole can of worms, but the whole thing needs to be replaced. Something we're gonna have to talk about down the line.
Yes.
At least now it seems like the front is drier than it's been previously.
Yeah.
And the tree work has made it easier for us to do this drainage work because now we can get the machines back there and it just looks done better and less so. Um so I just wanted to bring that that. So of the water expenses that we had tonight, three hundred thousand, that was that was pay for those who are.
Yeah.
That was not water.
Right, that was.
That was.
Those, yes.
So.
It'll pay for itself the way you say.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Take a few years. Take a few years.
Well, it will, but.
Yeah, but it'll pay for itself over and over after you do.
Uh, all right, laughs, I swear. I actually said a laugh. Eric Looper from Peak Performance wishes to purchase uh that piece of canal in a similar fashion to what Chris purchased and put her outdoor deck on. Um I have a meeting set up to talk about this with Chris uh as a courtesy. Uh but I'm gonna be talking about the process that we use for Chris to purchase, I think it's fourteen hundred square feet
Yes.
of park of canal that he wants to use as a parking area.
So how far does that go across canal to the to the uh?
Goes right up to the road end.
Tim's basically. The road ends on the opposite side.
Uh basically, if you if you'll see where Chris's deck is.
Yeah. So that's where it ends at the end.
Basically, right there.
Okay. But everybody has their dumpsters on the other side.
On the other side, yes. That's a whole separate issue.
Okay, I'm gonna talk about that with your private.
Yes. Yep. It's already been a kind of a conversation uh and Chris has been helping to try and keep that as clean as possible.
Oh, it's not working.
I know. Well, it's better than it was. Skylar went out there and and uh and cleaned. Although, uh there's a lot more that needs to be done. Um I am working on a grant through Phil Steck's office to replace our salt shift through a sand grid. I am going to be working with uh putting together a proposal for that. And it should it should not be nearly as expensive as we first thought. So I will have that for hopefully next meeting. It can be done before the season. So winter season, when we stock it again, I told Mike not to put anything anymore salt in it, which hopefully, you know, I hope we don't use anymore. All right. Lastly, uh I participated in a meeting with the Albany County Alliance, the Albany County IDA. Uh and uh we're working on a couple of projects for Manans. Uh Regeneron is going to be ramping up their uh their renovations. They put their sign up. They're about to redo their fence. Uh they're doing some bore holes for exploring just what's under the surface uh in their site down there. And so uh they should be putting a prefab guardhouse up at the front to control access into it once their fence is constructed. So uh so that's moving along. I'll be reading with their engineer and Mike Hagman later this week down there. And that's all I got. So who's next?
Uh my resolution. All right. So uh for the third year in a row, uh I would like to um make the following resolution and move uh move for its approval. Um resolution declaring April nineteenth Education and Sharing Day in the Village of Manans. Uh whereas equality education is one of the significant foundations for the continuing success of our state, our country and our society at large, and in the Village of Manans, we strive for the betterment of all of our citizens through an increased focus on education and sharing. And whereas in order to achieve its highest goals, education must not only impart knowledge, but also teach the students how to live, forming and strengthening their moral character to make a better life for themselves as individuals and for society as a whole, imparting moral and ethical values that rock the society since the dawn of civilization. And whereas a global spiritual leader and leading advocate for the advancement of education, the Rebbe Rabbi Menachem M. Schneerson uh stressed that a moral and ethical uh education empowers every individual to develop their full potential in making the world a better place. And whereas education and sharing day is observed each year on the Rebbe's birthday in recognition of his outstanding and lasting contributions toward the improvement of education, morality and acts of charity around the world. Data pause and reflect on a responsibility to ensure our youth have the foundation necessary to lead lives rich in purpose and fulfillment through service and good works. And whereas April nineteenth, twenty twenty-four will mark a hundred and twenty-three years since the Rebbe's birth, capping a year in which thousands of new institutions and initiatives were launched throughout the world in tribute to this celebration. And now therefore I, Seth Harris, Deputy uh Mayor of the Village of Manans, and Brian Marsh, Mayor of the Village of Manans, do hereby proclaim Friday, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, to be Education and Sharing Day in the Village of Manans and call upon government officials, educators, volunteers and citizens to reach out to those within your communities and work to create a better, brighter and more hopeful future for all. Um. I have to read that last.
Yeah. So we shared this with the school. Uh we just wanted to enter it into the record. So I need to second. So a little favor.
Um I just want to mention this Thursday night at Manans School is Literacy Night at six P M. It's partnership with the library. Um next Friday, the current seventh graders do the Brooks barbecue. Um it's a fundraiser to go to Camp Ginger Cook next year.
Say they get what date is that?
Next Friday, uh the twenty. Not this Friday, next Friday, from fourteen to sixteen. And then.
What are the options? Chicken?
There is chicken. Yeah, so I hope some raise money to go to Ginger Cook, um kind of like the passage as an eighth grader. Um and then obviously next Saturday is opening day of Little League and then also uh the father-daughter dance will be held here that evening as well.
Nice.
Oh, and this Saturday is the installation dinner for the fire company and the hog seller.
And the twentieth and Sunday is the.
Sunday is the earth day.
Earth day.
Yep. Big week. Big week. Busy week.
All right. Public comment. Go ahead, Bill.
Right. Now, since during last year, I proposed to repair the project for the restroom building of Manans Little League Baseball Center. I'm not only delighted to see that the old items have been removed from this building, I'm also glad to see the building is already being repaired.
Yes.
That's something I have been proposing for the last few years.
Right.
And in addition to using solar energy, I would like to propose using biogas or biofuel oil, which come from biomass power our village built, public buildings. Now, Brian, now since you're working with Philip's state representative about getting those wooden salt and gravel structures replaced, I'd like to have them replaced with new aluminum salt and gravel storage structures on the north and south part of Oakwood Avenue during this budget year. This is one of the thing projects I've been requesting since twenty-ten. So I'll be glad when it's gonna be done. The sooner it gets done, the project gets done, the better. Now, Nick, I thank, I appreciate you informing me that the public works guys are gonna remove that tree from it's been blocking those yellow marker stickers, which is connected with utility old number nine on the water filtration building property.
Yeah.
So so I'm very glad it's gonna be done. It's pretty soon. Needs to be done. Now, of course, I'm also requesting that any dog owner who fails to clean up his or after dogs will be subject to bigger fines, big surcharges and community work service. Now, while I was picking up litter on Elmwood Road last week, I'm delighted to see that our public works guys finally removed those dead four evergreen trees from Switzer Pope Park and I'd like to thank them for doing their job to remove all four dead evergreen trees. However, I still wish to propose planting new eight fir, spruce, elmlock and cedar trees in Switzer Pope Park. Now, Nick, one of the things I've six letters I wrote you about is my proposal to plant both foreign and North America domestic evergreen trees and in our parks and playgrounds and other village property. So I'm done speaking and thank you for letting me speak. I'm all done. Have a good night.
I wish I'd offer if you if you'd like, I would have me to look at your proposal to work for the transcript for Key. Thank you, Green County.
Appreciate that.
And I won't charge you a fee.
Okay. No fee. No deed.
No fees.
We don't want no fees. We don't want.
Maybe a little.
Wait, just. Take about the watch.
Exactly, exactly. There you go. So the correct, the correct question is, does Susan charge you a fee? Uh I got two other things. Hold on. Are you leaving us? You leaving us?
Yeah, tired.
Okay.
Have a good night.
Thanks. Have a good night.
I enjoy coming to the Village for you.
All right. Appreciate it. No, I got two things for executive. First, uh we had a hundred and fifty signups for the solar thing.
Wow, good.
So that's seventy-five hundred dollars that we're gonna get from Solar Simplify. And because we have reached a hundred and fifty, we I am applying for a credit from Tara from C D R T C.
Yeah.
And we're gonna get, instead of the five thousand grant, we're gonna get fifteen thousand
Nice.
of additional money for whatever projects we want, including planting trees.
Yeah.
Let's begin their rating too.
And as a climate smart, help us with it as be a with our climate smart initiative.
That's fine.
Uh as soon as the blooms are down on Brookside, they're going to come and prune those. Uh but it didn't make sense to ruin the beautiful trees.
Right.
Right, done? So after, not.
Make sure they don't. They're supposed to be before it blooms, but then they last year they bloomed too late. This year they bloom early.
So they're they're too pretty to chop right.
Yeah.
Well, they won't touch them because they are.
Yeah, same. Your head will roll.
I don't think he would be your biggest worry.
Look beautiful, so nobody's touching it. But after. All right. Uh, okay. Anybody, anything else? We have two matters for the session, one personnel matter and one contractual matter.
I've moved to enter executive session to discuss one contractual matter and one personnel matter. Second?
Well, that's a favor.
All right. Tim, you ready to be a cop snack again? All of these uh people, so if you click on these, there's Michael Irons. He's a laborer.